Good evening. I would call to order the October 9, 2019, Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp?
Here.
Mr. Van Buren is here. Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Bartel?
Here.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Here.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Here.
We have a call.
Good. Can everybody stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And anyone who's going to testify tonight, raise your right hand. We'll swear you in. Do you swear that anything you say tonight will be the whole truth? So help you God.
I do.
Very good. Everyone, please silence all of your devices. And I think the only people testifying tonight are going to be staff, but I think you still want to sign in for procedure.
Sure.
And first item will be the approval of minutes from the September 11, 2019, meeting.
I move that the minutes be approved as read.
Second?
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next step, open forum. Do we have anyone present tonight who would like to speak on any agenda or any item that is not on the agenda? Very good. And just a review for the public of our open public hearing procedure is that first we will introduce the petitioner and identify the petition. The applicant or petitioner will make his or her presentation. The next stage is the staff will comment. And the next stage was the public gets to comment and question the petitioner. And of course, at any time during this, the petitioner can respond to the questions and comments. Same for the... Tonight, the village attorney is absent, but normally we have his expertise to help us on these things. And finally, the commissioners will get to have their say-so on the issue. And then they have the vote. And that's the way the procedure goes. First item of business tonight is under old business. That's Planning and Zoning 19019, the request from the Community Development Department regarding the following: "The zoning ordinance text amendments to the Village of Westmont code to create definitions and regulations for microbreweries, micro distilleries, and similar alcohol-related businesses that manufacture and sell products for consumption on the premises and for small-scale distribution." And Ms. Johnson, Village Planner?
Hi, my name is Nalini Johnson, Village Planner. We are presenting to you a text amendment proposal that has come in front of you maybe twice before. And we're coming to the end of the proposal review process. So we'd like to get a little bit of clarification on a few of the items that have been presented to you before. Basically, it would be to allow microbreweries and brew pubs, which we are defining as craft alcohol beverage producers and dispensers, because that'll, you know, provide more of an umbrella term, in different districts. So right now, they're allowed in B2 only, in the B2 district. And we're proposing including provisions for allowing them in the B1 district, the C1 district, and the M districts as well. To clarify some of the issues that have come before us in the past, I'd like to maybe create a bit of a consensus-building or vote format for some of the five questions that are still outstanding. We've incorporated all of your comments. We've taken things out. We've moved things around. And so we have some outstanding clarification that I'd like from you. The first would be, would food sales be required or simply permitted? The reason for this question has to do with the fact that brew pubs right now, under certain license classifications, are not allowed to have more than one product being sold, only what's proposed, you know, what is being produced on site, because of the fear that eventually they will become taverns. And this was brought up by the village attorney, so I will incorporate as comments that have come in the last week. And by doing so, by allowing other companies to be distributed through these venues without food sales, it would become more of a tavern. And so that creates issues with licensing. So right now, we have a definition that says that food sales are permitted. And I'd like a show of hands or a vote. I don't know how you'd like to, you know, gather the vote, but I'd like to find out from you if you would like the food sales to be a requirement or a simply something that is allowed.
Permitted for me.
Permitted.
Permitted.
I would say permitted.
Is there opinions here?
I have a strong opinion one way or another.
What would be the benefit or cons of required?
Well, the cons would be we would have to get into restaurant regulations, public health requirements. We would get into percentage of food sales, oversight, things like that versus right now, without having that requirement, the issue would be limiting the product to only what is produced on site. So those are the two things that need to be weighed.
Well, if, in that case, if you permit the food, then the restrictions come with the food. So they know that going in, so they're not going to be surprised where all these limitations come, you know. So if they're willing to work around that or work through that, I don't have a problem with it.
The other question is if they, if you had food that was, had to be prepared on site, would be different health regulations and all that from food that's already prepared and is there?
Excuse me. Right.
And so that distinction too, I don't know.
Right. Right now, we have...
I would agree with the permitted. Because I think, the way I'm thinking is that if it's permitted, let's say that they opt out, they don't want to serve food, then they're just a microbrewery or whatever. And over time, maybe their product doesn't take off, and they do start bringing in other people's product. So then they're a tavern. But I don't see, I guess I don't see the downside to becoming a tavern. So if the goal is to mandate food sales to not let something become a tavern for reasons I don't understand, then I guess I would just say, let it be optional, unless there's a defined reason we don't like turning into a tavern.
What were the disadvantages of having food as opposed to just a microbrewery?
Well, I'm thinking the special use we have right now in the B1, I think that would be a difficulty if we were, had, if we had told them they needed to have onsite food production while they're trying to launch a brand-new business focusing on microbrewing.
Well, I just see it as being over regulatory.
Yeah, I would say it's an option.
It should be.
It's an option, yeah.
So I had to run real briefly. Craig, did you weigh in? Do you have a preference?
I'd say to permit it because then they can, they know the baggage that comes with the food.
So I think on this one, everyone spoke. And I know staff feels that permitted. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, just to be clear, it would not necessarily be food produced on site. It could be brought in. Okay. So either brought in or produced. I go with the permitted.
Okay. And with the caveat that the language for the definition will retain the, you know, limits to the types of beer or where they're produced, you know, limited to what's produced on site. Now, there could be an additional piece where they could be allowed to also sell ancillary produced, you know, beer that is produced by other craft alcohol, you know, beverage producers. So that wouldn't limit them to only what they're producing on site, but it would be able to allow them to sell other products from other breweries while yet not being required to sell food. So we will have that distinction, so that the products they bring in are not from, you know, Budweiser or whatever, sorry, other companies.
I think that's good, because, you know, what I've seen elsewhere in other communities is that the microbrew, the people that are doing that, running those types of businesses, there's like a group of them out there, and they all network. And I just think it lends itself to success of a Westmont business if all of a sudden the beer that you got at the microbrew in Willowbrook is desirable, it really helps the business survive. So, you know, it gives other options that they're selling microbrew anyway, so why restrict them? So I just want to go with less restrictive and allow that to happen.
And just so I'm clear on this point, the rules as you've drafted them, Nalini, would allow a microbrewery in Westmont to have a beer from another microbrewery?
Yes.
But how about your regular standard beer? That's not, yeah, I agree.
It would have to be categorized as craft alcoholic beverage. And the reason we have that umbrella, we've discussed before, deals with allowing other fermented type things like wines and other products to be sold. The second question relates to parking requirements. We have implemented some special conditions that depend on the district where they would be located as to whether, you know, the parking requirements would be stricter or less strict, or nonexistent, for example, in B1. Is that something we're in agreement on? Does everybody agree with that? Or would there be an alternative, not providing specific parking requirements per each district? So B1 right now has no parking requirements because of the nature of B1. And then successively on through to Commercial has the most requirements to provide more parking. And then, sorry, Manufacturing would have, again, contracting the requirements based on the space concerns and the fact that they're producing more and not consuming as much.
So you're saying there are parking requirements for each zone?
Yes.
And they're decreasing as you go further, less dense towards manufacturing?
It's a bit of a bell curve. It peaks at the C1 and then goes back down at M.
I know that part of our discussion was about an existing facility in the village that operates, and parking is an issue. I thought of that after we spoke of it last. Does it make sense for us to maybe add a grandfather clause, so we don't automatically, with the implementation of these ordinances, that all of a sudden creates a non-conforming use that, you know, puts undue pressure on a business owner in town? Does it make sense to do it?
The village attorney isn't here and would address that, but Bruce, can you?
Yeah, let me give you my thoughts. When a village or any government creates new rules, things that are already in existence, the layman's term is they're grandfathered, and the technical term is they're legal, non-conforming. So that protection is there. I wouldn't suggest adding grandfathering language into the ordinance.
If that's the case, I would just think of that after we spoke last, and said, geez, I would not want to, you know, all of a sudden, with these new rules, regulations going to be put in place after council looks at it, that all of a sudden we have created a hardship for a business owner in town.
To be clear, though, if that one particular existing business wanted to expand their operations, then they would have to come in...
And do the new...
Based on what Nalini is suggesting, they would have to apply for a special use permit, and you would review it.
Right.
And then you could decide if you would want to let them expand or not.
Understood.
Okay. The third item relates to seating rules. Right now, we have a proposal that provides for different seating area dimensions and measurements per district where it would be located. So the definition also includes a percentage, but that will be stricken from, you know, the proposal when you see it. We will not have any percentages within the definitions, and we will have those within the special conditions that pertain to each zoning district. So my question would be, is that item agreeable as it's written? Or are there any changes that you would like to propose as far as size, mostly?
I would, I would agree with, as you, as it's written, you researched this and obviously know more about it than I do at this point.
I agree also.
Okay. The fourth item relates to the producer category would specialize in production. It's intuitive, but right now, the way it's written, it adds and/or distribution, which muddies the definition. So I will be taking out and/or distribution. In other words, the user will specialize in production. So that means that they could have an eating area, seating area, they could distribute, but their specialty is production. Is that agreeable?
Yeah.
And then the last item...
Can we go back to that one?
Yes.
Does that apply to, like we just talked about with microbreweries sharing products? So would that be considered a distribution?
They would.
Would that, would that clause in there be somewhat inherent as being a conflict?
It could, which is why I'm proposing taking out that and/or distribution and just saying specializing in production. It would not prohibit or limit distribution, but it would remove from the definition the idea that the category would be a distributor or bottler, because that would be a completely different business.
Yeah.
So they would be distributing, but that would be ancillary, secondary to their main activity, which is produce.
Right. So if Lamont, you know, wanted product from Westmont, they could get it, and it's not a problem. So, yeah.
So you would be removing the and slash or distribution state? Yeah.
And just so I understand, then that effect would be preventing a bottling operation?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. And the fifth one relates to separation distances. The state liquor license apparently has a 100-foot separation requirement from schools, residence districts, I believe. So we're proposing something that is a little more restrictive, and that would actually stipulate what the separations would be. Now, the proposal in front of you matches the state liquor license requirements. Do we want to change that or keep it as it is?
I'd say keep it as it is.
I'm okay with keeping it as is.
I am too.
Could I jump in with a question?
No.
Certainly.
Nalini, on this one, what, was there a concern raised or an alternative that someone was suggesting? And what was their perspective on maybe making a change?
The alternative would be not providing for the ability to have a brew pub locating directly next to, 100 feet is a very small amount, maybe a couple of storefronts away or half a block or a piece of a block away from, say, a school, or across the street some materials are about 100 feet or less. So this would, you know, negate the possibility of having, say, a brew pub directly across from a school or a residence. So those are the things that we're wondering about, if we want the zoning code to be a little more restrictive and stipulate a bit more of a separation distance between these uses and these, you know, activities.
And what's the draft?
The discussion that we had, Bruce, was about the way our village downtown really operates. And bingo, you've got like alleyways, then residential, but we really would like to have that type of facility on the main drag and not be restrictive because residents are behind. Because we have all of the businesses there now. So it really is really site-specific, but...
Well, also, I think other similar uses like taverns and bars have 100-foot requirement. So it'd be strange to say this uses 500 or something.
And the rules as drafted recommend how much of a buffer?
100. They match the separation requirements of the state.
So it's consistent?
Consistent.
And that's what we're recommending?
That's what we're recommending.
Well, I don't see any no's. I see everybody nodding.
Okay. The prior iterations of this proposal did include 500, 1,000, but we pulled it into 100 based on input from the village attorney. And I know we had that discussion earlier, and we wanted that separation distance, but, you know, I think I'll agree now that we're going to be consistent with the state regulations. So that's all I have. And unless you want further discussion or have more questions prior to an overall vote of the motion.
So you're not asking us to vote till you go down and draw it up and...
We're asking for an actual vote to approve the proposed text amendments, based on the strikeouts that we're proposing and the consensus here.
Well, now we get to ask if staff has any comments to your...
Well, as the other staff here, I'm just going to say Nalini's done a ton of work on this, so kudos to her. We both like what is being drafted here, and we think that they're good rules.
I do too. Thank you.
I agree. And, you know, from removing the distilleries from it, which was really not related, it simplifies it. And I like the other, providing in the dispensaries and production facilities as opposed to the, these torturing these definitions of microbreweries and brew pubs and things. So I'm impressed.
Okay.
Anyone from the public like to comment on this? Okay. It's our turn. Commissioners, Commissioner Bartel?
I really don't have any questions. I'm pleased with how it's, who did put a ton of work into it. I appreciate that. And I see it much more clear this month, having read through it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Yeah, I'm in agreement in its entirety of what Nalini's put together and the revision that she had. And I think it's a great job, and this is going to be, this will serve us well.
Thank you.
I'm in agreement.
I'm in agreement. Commissioner Thomas?
I support staff's recommendation.
Mr. Sharp?
I agree. I support it fully also, and appreciate the three, I think it was three different...
Well, you weren't really on the hot seat tonight.
Not yet.
You know, I said what I had to say there on the distillers and these re-categorizing. And so I'm impressed with your work and support it. So...
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed text amendments to the Westmont Code of ordinances to create zoning definitions and regulations for microbreweries, brew pubs, and similar craft alcoholic beverages, or beverage dispensers and producers as presented.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
I'll second. Bartel?
Good. Discussion on the motion. Questions? Hearing none. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes.
Sir?
Just a quick final statement. I know I've said this before, but you can look forward in the next two or three months to a local business coming in and asking for a special use permit to expand their operations. And the rules that you've just recommended will be what you use to evaluate their request. And it'll be your decision if you want to approve their request or not. So just a heads up.
Okay, thank you. Under new business, we have BZC 19024, request from Community Development Department regarding the following: "Zoning ordinance text amendments to the Village of Westmont code to create definitions and regulations for recreational cannabis And we have the Community Development Director, Mr. Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the second item on the agenda tonight are some possible rules for where cannabis retail sales would be allowed if the village board decides to not opt out. So very briefly, the state legislature passed a law saying that marijuana sales, cannabis sales will be legal in Illinois unless a community specifically takes action to opt out and prohibit such sales in their community. So the village board is going to be having that discussion between now and the end of the year. And it will be the village's board's decision whether or not they want to allow the sales here by doing nothing, or to opt out and prohibit sales. The village board has asked you, as I explained last month, to help them make their decision by coming up with some ideas and some zoning rules that we could use to regulate cannabis sales if they allow it. So last month, we went over this. The rules are basically pretty simple. I'm going to refer to the bottom of page three. And what we discussed last month, and what there was some general support for among this group, was to say that cannabis sales would only be allowed in the B2 district, the C1 district, and the M district, but only as a special use. So no business could come in and just get a business license and open up their doors to the public the next day. They would have to come in front of you. We would notify the neighboring property owners. There'd be a notice in the newspaper, and there'd be a hearing, and your recommendation would then go to the board. We also, after some discussion last month and some of your feedback, came up with some additional requirements that would be imposed on these businesses that they would have to meet in order to receive a special use permit. One would be a minimum distance from schools of 1,000 feet, a minimum distance from a park. And last month, your suggestion was to have a 1,000-foot spacing buffer between any such business and a park. And we've produced a map reflecting that, but I'm going to circle back to the parks issue in a second. And then the third item would be to prohibit any business like this from being located within 100 feet of a residence. And that's consistent with the liquor license rule, so treating it like we do liquor licenses. Now, included in your packet is a map. So if you want to refer to the map that was in your packet, there's some blues that represent schools. There are some greens that represent parks. And then there are orange parcels. The orange parcels would represent the properties that meet all of those requirements, where someone could propose one of these businesses, and they would, they would meet the minimum requirements for a special use. Doesn't mean you'd have to approve it, but at least it would meet all the spacing requirements. When we circulated this among some staff and some elected officials, they said the 1,000-foot spacing requirement from parks might be excessive, because it really does eliminate a lot of potential commercial properties from consideration. So what I just handed out tonight are two new maps. We got these Monday and tried to get them to you via email yesterday, so you had some time to look at them. At the top, hopefully it's very clearly labeled, there's a map with a 500-foot buffer from parks. And as you'll see, there are more orange properties, meaning there are more properties that would become eligible as a possible location. And then the final map at the top, hopefully says very clearly, a 100-foot buffer from parks. This has, as you would expect, even more properties in orange, meaning that there would be even more eligible properties. I think that there is some hope that you, as a group, will discuss these other options, either the 500 or the 100-foot buffer from parks, as well as the one with the 1,000-foot buffer, and give those some consideration. The last thing I want to say before I finish up my report here is I also handed out a, it's called a model ordinance. So the Illinois Municipal League, it's an advocacy group for incorporated villages and cities, they'll put together model ordinances that, so rather than every village in the state having to figure out how to write a rule, they'll write a model that a lot of times communities will just adopt. It's efficient. The village attorney reminded me that the rules that we've been discussing and the spacing is really for the retail sales to the public. But there's a whole slew of complicated things that the recently adopted Illinois state law allows about places to cultivate and, you know, places to warehouse and places to... you know, places to warehouse and places to store. The village attorney's suggestion was, and this was not included in the staff report, to include in your recommendation that all of those other uses that are listed in the state legislation and then in this model ordinance would be only allowed in the M district as special uses. So the cultivation and any warehousing and any of those other uses that really don't have a public component to them, there aren't customers coming and going, just say they're, you know, they're only in the M district and only with a special use permit. So I wanted to throw that out there for your consideration as well.
Would it require a second amendment or?
It would just require when a motion is made to specify what specifically is being recommended, either the item in the staff report, which would include everything on bottom of page three and the top of page four, or if you want to modify that with a smaller buffer around parks, and then finally specifying that the other cannabis-related activities that the legislature has allowed would be only allowed in M districts and only with a special use permit, just so that we cover those other cannabis-related activities that aren't retail stores. So that's it for my report, I'm available if you have questions.
Okay, thank you. Staff comments?
Well, there are separation distances, and I think it's because, you know, it is, it does differ from liquor, and I think it's appropriate from a planning perspective to introduce those separation requirements.
Okay. Does anyone from the public like to address this? Sir?
Curious that...
Please, could you first come to the podium and stand, you need to be sworn in.
And also sign in.
You'll need to sign in as well.
All right, just name, address, and phone.
And please be sworn in, do you swear that everything you say will be truthful, so help you God?
Yes.
Excellent.
Clarend Hills resident, does that matter?
Not at all.
Okay. And I'm heavily into the cannabis industry, and I'm a cardholder, and I'm a caregiving cardholder for my autistic son as well in Illinois, so a lot of perspective. But I'm just curious about the, I wasn't at the last meeting, I apologize, but the 1,000-foot to school rule, is that pretty set in stone in the guidelines now in terms of you're looking at different distances to parks, but 1,000-foot to school is something that is, you've come to a conclusion on?
Well, we've reached no conclusion, we're hoping to reach a conclusion tonight, but when we discussed it a month ago, there seemed to be a lot of support, both among the plan commissioners here and among staff, to keep 1,000-foot buffer, and again, that would only be keeping retail sales establishments 1,000 feet from schools, but that's under discussion tonight.
Okay. I just referenced the hotly debated City of Chicago's mandate that came down a week ago from the mayor that took the medical 1,000-foot to schools and daycares and took it down to 500 feet to open up commercial districts and allow for expansion because dispensaries are retail operations that need to be in the daily needs pattern, and they're not going to go where the first round of licensing forced them to go. It's going to be a market-specific and retail dynamics-type location discussion. And then I just wanted to point out, just, you know, being from the area and being a patient, having to go a very far distance to a dispensary right now, I go to Justice, Illinois, that's the closest dispensary, which is not convenient for me, and the industry, both medically and recreationally, are changing dramatically, and it's changed medically my family permanently for the better, and it'll affect everyone sitting in this room at some point in time for the better, maybe not personally, but within their family. And so, you know, it, being that daily needs trip, much like the grocery store, the drugstore, the bank, et cetera, and that evolving, I just would ask that you really consider that in the future and that these operations, unlike liquor stores or other things, are, you know, they're, first off, you need to produce a 21-year-old ID to enter the premises, unlike a 7-Eleven, that a kid could stuff a liquor bottle in his pants, or go into Jewel and stuff a liquor bottle in his pants underage, can't do that at a dispensary. And then, of course, most patients are leaving dispensaries with a bag that looks like a Walgreens prescription bag, et cetera, and it's not, you know, it's hermetically sealed when it leaves a dispensary, so it's, it's not able to be just, you know, consumed in the parking lot and things of that nature. So I just want to, you know, point out some of those things if they haven't been pointed out, because I, just as a resident and knowing the experience as a consumer and as a patient, and the fact that all the towns surrounding me seem to be opting out, and this town seems to be pretty, you know, open-minded about potentially opting in, and I personally work with a company that wants to be in Westmont, locate in Westmont, and has a property identified that hopefully is in an orange zone, but nevertheless, you know, I think you'd find that in the long haul, not just the revenue, but the stories like mine that come out of the dispensary medically for families and the outreach that they do is something that you're going to be proud of in the future, I just wanted to point out kind of that perspective. Thanks for the time.
Let me just ask you, now, I think that we have medical dispensaries in Westmont already.
No.
Don't we?
No.
I thought we had one in, okay, I'm...
No, there's only 55 open in Illinois, and the closest to here that I go to is Justice, Windy City Cannabis, so, and I think Naperville would be to the west, the next closest, you know, at this point, so...
Do you anticipate that with recreational facilities opening, that that will, that people, instead of going to medical sites, will go instead to the, you know?
That's, you know, that's a great, no, it's a great, it's a great question. I, as a medical patient, would always seek out the medical facility because I'm going to get a tax advantage versus the recreational patient, I'm also under Illinois law supposed to have a, my product's supposed to be in stock for my autistic kid, et cetera, over the guy getting his barbecue supplies, et cetera, so that's a great question. I think that my personal take is that although the whole focus right now is on recreational and the licenses that are open right now and in this October to December 31st window that's open right now, it's all about recreational, but ultimately, it doesn't make any sense at all that we're going to just widely open the universe to recreational and turn our backs to my story about autism and et cetera, and that that's just going to be left in the dust. It's almost a no-brainer to add it back in after the fact, after everyone tries to figure out how much revenue might be there in taxation, so that's my perspective, but it's a great question. I would seek out, if a recreational-only facility came to Westmont, I'd have, it'd be really convenient for me, but I'd be forced to pay higher taxes and maybe wait in line at the Westmont facility versus driving 25 minutes to my medical, as of right now, but I think that changes.
As long as you're there, does anyone else have?
Please, I'd love to, I don't want to take your time, but I'd love to answer questions. I've been at many village meetings and pretty versed in the topic.
I don't have any direct questions, but I do appreciate you greatly coming out and giving us your opinion.
Appreciate it. I'll just make one more comment, real quick, is that there is this crazy, and I'm involved in it right now with one of the expanding companies, they have their, as the folks in the village might know, they have their second site provision right now, where if you're one of the 55, you've been given the opportunity to go get a second, and you're compliant and you're a good citizen, you can go get a second site. In the same general geography, that's happening, that's kind of like already happening, those applications are already in the news and happening. But October 1st opened the window, under Illinois law, for 75 more recreational licenses, and that window closes December 31st, and there's a mad scramble going on, and I, hopefully, maybe I'm one of the first to say, hey, I want to be here and I got a site in mind already, but for people that are applying and they want to get in the line, you don't have to, it's not a first come, first served, but you got to apply before December 31st, so I would ask you, as you're going through your process and making, the sooner the better for you to get to a point where you know what the rule's going to be, you feel like you've got an ordinance in place and you can get a meeting and a passes, because then you're on the map for any of these 75 licenses that might want to be looking at Westmont at that point. And that for someone like me who's in real estate looking at it, I'm going to meetings, I guess trying to figure out who's in, so I don't waste my time applying to villages that don't want us, kind of thing, so, just for perspective.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question. I have a question for you, sir. Is the site that you referenced interested Westmont, is that on the map, have you seen the map?
No, I haven't, I was hoping I could see it, I hadn't seen it, or I'm hoping I can, if it's for public, copy.
Is it possible to put the map up on the screen?
It is public, the hesitation is there's three different maps.
We haven't decided yet, but I just wanted to...
On parks, yeah, on parks.
I just wanted to know, you know, you say you've targeted a site.
Yeah, I can look real quick, yep. And I'll dart my eyes so as not to give away where I'm looking.
When you say, the second question I have is...
Of course. I'm sorry. This is CAS, want to try one? This is CAS. Yeah. This is pretty restrictive. Is it restrictive then? Yeah. Yeah, I think I'm good, I think I'm in orange.
Well, and that's one of the options, and if it gets adopted, so there's still a lot of ifs.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one more question. If you were to, you yourself or whoever you're talking about, obtain a license to open a facility in Westmont, what type of facility would it be?
Well, it has to be recreational under this current 75, but the goal would be to be in a village that, well, the goal would be, for my, I can't speak to everyone's operation, but my personal company's goal would be, even though we're obtaining a recreational license, we wouldn't want to be within, if that's outside of 1,000-foot school zone and daycare, then it could always be medical, whenever that add-on happens, if it's within that 1,000 feet, then we might be stuck for a while, if not forever, trying to become medical, so that's, the goal would be to become medical, but we have to chase it as recreational right now in this current window.
Just because of the state.
Ideally, we wouldn't want to pick a site that was restricted medically forever.
Understood. Thank you, appreciate it.
Interesting. Everyone wants, like, to show the maps over half, but everyone's got them, that they're...
Okay, we can go directly to individual commissioners, or if you want, we could have a group discussion here on this, on these buffer zones or spacing, from whether the 1,000 feet that we discussed last month, or these other maps that you see with 500-foot buffers and 100-foot buffers.
Well, I have a couple of questions, this, the model ordinance, we're not proposing accepting this model ordinance, we're just, it's presented basically to show what other communities might be doing, but it does also list these definitions that we're proposing to move into the M district. So our definition of what we're talking about tonight, the retail sales, is what we would call a dispensing organization, a don't-use cannabis dispensing organization, which in the model code requires a 1,500-foot separation from schools and daycares, so it's actually much more restrictive than...
I think that's the model, but we don't have to go by that.
No, I'm just, as, I'm just pointing it out, that, just across the board...
Is that the state of Illinois for the medical, 1,500 feet?
For any, all of the definitions, any cannabis-related activity in here, 1,500 feet.
And again, so that was the Illinois Municipal League's suggestion for some common language, common rules, common format for an ordinance.
Yeah, no, I understand, and I think a thousand feet is pretty restrictive personally in our village, but maybe 500 feet is appropriate.
The question that I have is, within that, the ones that were drawn are orange here, those are, would be acceptable by the distance, but how many of those are available to be exploited?
Yeah, please, Bruce?
Yeah, it's an excellent question, and it raises an important distinction. It just says what pieces of land meet the criteria, but that doesn't mean there isn't an existing business there already.
Yeah, right.
So we didn't do an analysis to see, of all those orange parcels, how many have, you know, vacant buildings or businesses that could sell or anything, we just said these are the pieces of land that would meet the criteria.
Well, last month, we recommended 1,000 feet spacing with parks because it was similar to the liquor and establishments, taverns, tobacco vaping things, it was, that 1,000 feet was consistent. And then we felt that parks should be included in that, along with schools and in other areas, so I think I could certainly be flexible on that 1,000 feet with parks, if we look at the, at these other, the 500-foot, and for example, the 100-foot buffers, and, you know, it seems reasonable to be a little flexible here, to me.
I would agree, this 1,000 feet is really restrictive, this map doesn't give a lot of option, and if those parcels are already, you know, in place, I think it would be, it would send the message that there isn't a lot of options for people to look at Westmont, so I guess I agree, I think 500 feet might be more flexible.
Commissioner Thomas?
I agree, the 1,000 is way too restrictive.
So you don't own any of those properties that are, 1,000?
We do not.
Okay.
And the difference, if you look between 500 and 100, the difference is not that great, I mean, it's not...
They're all in the same area.
Exactly.
The only thing is if you were, if you wanted, if you make it so restrictive, there's about half as many spaces, even though they're in the same, if, under 500 as opposed to one, you are essentially banning it if you don't, if you leave no option for the person.
Right, so I...
So there has to be something within the 100, whereas it's within the 500.
So I would put my vote to the 100, because it's almost identical to the 500, you know, and again, just because it's orange doesn't mean it's available, you know, so, it's mine, 100.
Sir?
My only comment would be, it seems like with liquor establishments, we have this 100-foot precedent, so there, for me, there's some argument to be made of using a similar 100-foot for other business like this, from residential and parks. I think that the school buffer should be a little bigger, I think that's appropriate.
Noticeable difference in the 100 versus the 500 is that the 100 allows catty-corner lots adjacent to parks to be cannabis sales, just I'm throwing that out there in case...
Yeah, we said, like, if you look at the southeast corner of Ty Warner Park.
Yeah, yeah, both, and there's also, they'll, it's too small to read.
Off 63rd Street.
Yeah.
Another response to that comment, and I don't have strong feelings either way, but if you wanted less than 500, but you do raise concerns about proximity or catty-corner from parks, I mean, 100 and 500 are arbitrary numbers, you could do 200, 250, 300, so...
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would just like to see not adjacent to a park parcel, whether that's across the street or catty-corner.
I think a 2, and we don't have maps for this unfortunately, but I think a 250 buffer would definitely accomplish eliminating catty-corner properties from parks.
Yeah.
Let's go to individual commissioners. Commissioner LaVoy?
Yeah, I looked at this a little differently, I guess, I did a lot of research on this since we last spoke, one thing I'll share with you is that several municipalities in the...
Yeah, I looked at this a little differently, I guess. I did a lot of research on this since we last spoke. One thing I'll share with you is that several municipalities and collar communities, both, both regionally and with us, have done a lot of investigation from a, a law enforcement perspective, and there doesn't seem to be a lot of concern everywhere across the board. It hasn't been a lot of police activity across the board in any other municipality. And I've read documents from different police agencies that support that. So that's what, one thing that I, I found. The other thing that I found is that, you know, other communities around us are restricting the, the growing facilities and, and other facilities that, other than the sale, in and around our community, including Lombard, I think Downers Grove, Naperville. So I think that they're, they're being more restrictive than we are from that perspective. But I also looked at, and tried to think out of the box, because of the map that we have, and really, at five-hundred feet, one-hundred foot, it really, I mean, if, if we say five-hundred and we come, we have an application for a special use and it's four-hundred, it would be a variation request. So really, it's a moot point as far as I'm concerned. It could be five-hundred, one-hundred, it could be, but I, I would like to, you know, keep it away from, you know, some residential areas. So, if it's five-hundred, I guess I'm okay with that. But what I, what I looked at, the different perspective I took on it is, when you look at our map, all of those properties are fully developed. And when you look at that, does that mean that a property owner, the gas station on Pasquenelli and, and Ogden Avenue, that owner could come in and ask for a license to distribute out of the gas station? Or a car dealership? Or, you know, an, an existing use that would like to have this? Is there something in here that would prohibit that?
Let's, you have an answer to that, Bruce?
Well, now's when I really wish the attorney were here.
Yeah.
But, but two things would have to happen. First, that business or property owner would have to get a license from the state. And I'm not even going to pretend to understand all the state requirements that would have to be satisfied, but, but those would have to be met. And secondly, that, that property owner, it'd be the property owner, would have to come in front of you and ask for the local special use permit. So, I suppose a gas station owner could get a license from the state, I don't know, but let's pretend they could. And then they would have to come in front of you and say, hey, I want to be a cannabis retailer out of my gas station, and then you would have to evaluate, you know, if you want to approve that or not.
Well, that, that's kind of where I went. Then I went to second base, just like you're talking about, are these existing facilities that are within this orange designated zone, would there be building requirements, parking requirements, that all of a sudden become intertwined with their current operations? And I just think that our, we're going down that trail, that, you know, we're looking at, at a map that is fully developed, and it's, doesn't offer a whole lot of opportunity for new development, or re, maybe redevelopment, but it's something that, you know, I'm concerned about because of, you know, putting one of these facilities inside some other operation, and therefore may not get the attention that it deserves to manage that operation. And that kind of, that kind of material is not in our, our proposal here. And, you know, is it, is it worthy? And I'd just like to hear what everyone else has to say, that, you know, when you, would a license be prohibited if it would be, it was a multi-use site?
Well, go ahead.
When you were saying about the police organizations, I didn't understand which way they fell, pro or con, or no opinion, or-
They've, they have, every, every police agency that queued in on, on that correspondence did not have a problem with any of the facilities. Very few calls, a lot of municipalities have no calls.
Out of existing facilities?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
So what there's, with research going on, as our village is doing the research and due diligence on, on applying what we think is, is right, these activities are happening and investigations are ongoing.
But they're out of state.
I'm sorry?
These are out of state.
Yeah, it, no, in state.
It has to be where Colorado or one of the states-
No, this is here. This is, I'm talking about collar communities like ours, that have already adopted these ordinances and are ahead of us in those, those ordinances that have now been put in place. And for them to make those decisions and draft those ordinances, get that in place, they went ahead and, and talked to police agencies for their homework and their due diligence to come up with it. And I thought it was interesting that, you know, I got copies of that that I could also share with everybody, one that basically said that, and I was kind of shocked that there was like no concerns at all from any village municipal police department, that there isn't a whole lot of calls here at all. And they're highly regulated and the license requirements have, have done that. So they've done a, that tells me they've done a good job with the licensure-type issues, that they don't have this loosey-goosey, anybody can get an application and, and get a license. So, that just tells me something that everywhere else where these are these facilities, as far away from Westmont as they are, they're well-managed and well-run, because we don't have, you know, the rap chief and the police departments have all the calls. So, that I, I wanted to share with you. But I'm really concerned about, you know, yeah, we create a map and, oh, five-hundred feet, one-hundred feet, a thousand feet, you know, it's something that, you know, I, I think more of a concern of mine is that we have a fully-developed site, designated areas, and do we restrict multi-use sites?
Well, I would think in the licensing by the state, that would already be regulated, isn't it?
It's regulated to get to your license, but what I'm saying is-
No, no, our data-
What would prevent-
About multi, dual-use or triple-use? Nothing?
Well, we, we could-
Was that a yes?
The licensing itself will regulate the security and all the aspects of the usage of the single.
Single use, right?
Right, you can't sell gas, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that was really my question. I don't want to, you know, all of a sudden have the gas station selling.
Commissioner Thomas would like to respond to something that you said as well.
The multi-use, you said the state regulates the single, the single cannabis thing. As far as the gas station, the gas station is under their current parking restrictions or, or formula and that. So once they get the license, say, say they're, they're successful, are parking restrictions and formulas for whatever, whatever size facility they're talking about as far as selling the cannabis? Gas stations don't have that many park, much parking, so that something will have to change, whether they cut back, they're going to have to fit our, our formula for parking, or, because it, because you said the state will take care of the security. But that was singular, though. That wasn't-
I'm not going to, you know, I wish the village attorney was here and I, and for, for purposes here, I'm Steve May and the village manager here. The amount of presentation and, 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 you know, I don't want to say coursework, but, you know, conference-related and, and programs have been put on about this topic ever since the state law was passed, is, you know, it's very clear that the, the requirements of the state to get the license in the facility, everything from security to how it's secured, when it leaves, and being sealed, and all of that, and there are inventory requirements, and, you know, internal security twenty-four-hour, you know, product, it's, it's, it tends to be a cash business, so there's those aspects too. So all of that's regulated with the state law, and that's there before it ever gets to us. Parking requirements, we would handle that like any other business, but my understanding is, is that you can't have a multiple-use facility. In fact, I, I believe there is even language in there that prevents them from even kind of identifying that that's what the business is. It's more of a destination-based business. So, you know, no neon, no blinky signs, no green crosses, none of that.
Steve, is, is there any limitations on that, that state licensure application that would prohibit one license from going to multiple sites?
From changing locations?
Like the gambling.
Yeah, exactly. Could I have one in Westmont, one in Glen Allen, one in Downers Grove, if the law would allow it?
I don't believe so, but again, I'm not expert on it, I'm just trying to answer your questions and concerns and absence of the, the attorney. But the license is for a particular business, business owner, not transferable, and for the address. If we apply, if you were going to-
You being the village manager, would you want a recommendation from us as a board tonight, or I'm a little, I, I would like to have John here too, to advise us on some of these, these issues, but if you-
No, there, there's, I'm not going to describe any urgency to any of it. The, the assignment is to work on just the zoning aspect and make a recommendation on what zoning districts and what buffers and what radiuses would be appropriate for it. I am, whether you do or not, I assure you, the village board would weigh in on all that topic, and it just needs to be in place, well, before January first, of course.
Sure.
And, secondly, the sooner it's in place, and it goes forward, there, if there's interested people and participate, how do they plan for, you know, what they're doing if we wait till the December meeting to approve zoning?
Okay, and you might know more on this topic too, you know, I hope you don't mind me asking you-
But not at all.
But in Bruce's initial presentation, he said that, that village board and other people within the administration, he didn't say who, but made reference to this thousand-foot being overly restrictive, and-
I'll take credit for that. You're, you, you first was introduced to this topic a month ago, and you went on there, and the thousand-foot comment came out of your discussion of what you'd like to see. Didn't stand out as being, you know, overly restrictive or, you know, unreasonable, until you map it, and, you know, there, there were six parcels, I don't know what it was. It was a very few things that applied, and it was incredibly small. And, you know, the same comment about those aren't even necessarily parcels available for redevelopment for whoever owns them. So it, it just didn't seem practical. And then when you get to the point, you know, again, I don't want to sound like an attorney, but you can't zone something out by being too restrictive and say it, it applies nowhere except this one parcel, then you run into different trouble. So, I asked that different buffers were looked at, so that you could see them tonight, just to see the comparison.
Understood. And, you know, the other thing that I'll, I'll tell you that, and I'll make public, that, you know, when I researched this after our last meeting, and I'm glad we have a resident of, not of Westmont, but of Clarton Hills here, that testified that there are people in need here, from veterans to other people that are ill, that have medical conditions, and, you know, I think this whole, whole process of investigation through this to create what we're, we're going to do has really been enlightening. And I think that there's a, there's a true need out there, because I know people that do use it and I, that are benefited from it.
Well, but to stay on topic, that's not our job tonight.
Understood. But I'm just saying that, you know, that it, that the investigation enlightened me a little bit, because I was more restrictive, and that's where the thousand-foot thing came up that, in our last discussion, because we're trying to be protective. But I really think that it's not necessary to be overly restrictive here. I think that the, the one-hundred-foot is even legitimate, you know, and I would even be in favor of that, so.
Okay.
Just because of the way our, our town is mapped.
Not that it came up at the moment, I just wanted to answer, we did have one medical application once that did not pass, but that was about six years ago.
Okay.
So, the topic came up, but there is no facility.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
I, I agree that a thousand feet, and then when they come in, and if there's a peculiar situation there that, that we'd be concerned about, we can always deal with it.
You're saying, yes to a thousand feet?
I would say a thousand, thousand feet, because otherwise it eliminates so many spaces, plus, there aren't that many-
You're saying one-hundred feet, I think.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, no, I mean five-hundred feet.
Okay.
Five-hundred feet, I'm sorry.
But you're not, you're not meaning a thousand feet.
No, no, I didn't mean a thousand, I mean five-hundred. The one that, you know. And then we can always, as he said, we can always do a, a variance if they want, if there's a situation, they would call for it.
Mr. Thomas?
I'm in favor of the one-hundred. What I'm looking at, it's very, it's one-hundred, five-hundred, it's just six of one, half dozen the other, and that's where I'm at.
Okay, and do you have any comment on this model ordinance? Okay. Commissioner Sharp?
I want to, I still want to advocate for something more than a hundred, just, I didn't realize that you could actually be catty-corner two properties less than a hundred feet. I mean, this is not on the docket at all, but I would want to increase it for taverns and micro. I think that a hundred feet, the intent of the separation is that you're not immediately adjacent to another parcel. So the fact that you can have catty-corner parcels with that separation bothers me. But moving forward, I, I, a hundred-and-fifty feet, two-hundred feet, something that eliminates the catty-corner condition, I would advocate for on the board. I, in terms of the model code, I don't know, I think that we're only paying attention to these uses.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Although there is something in here, we've already discussed that we can't have multiple uses on a site, but the dispensing organization, part of the requirements in the model code is that there is a restriction on the floor area. Seventy-five percent of the floor area must be dispensing, just a, maybe that's possibly why they have that in there, is that there's unforeseen complications that we're not thinking of right now. And I don't want to see, I feel like when we jumped in with the slot machine, video gambling use, that quickly got out of control in the village, and then we had to go back and put some more restrictions on separation between them and signage, and exactly how operators, how many they can have, can they have multiple tenant spaces next to each other that operate with these? And I, it does cause concern that are we thinking broadly enough about how this might be adopted?
With regards to the spacing between like businesses, I didn't include it, but there's a provision in the state legislation that says these, you know, license holders for these businesses cannot be within one-thousand, five-hundred feet of each other.
Okay.
So if one goes in, the second one has to find a place at least fifteen-hundred feet away.
Well, again, I'll just advocate for something more than a hundred, and other than that, I'm, I'm in favor of moving the rest of the uses to the M District, and with the language that we've developed.
And, okay. Commissioner Bartel?
I, I agree that somewhere around two-hundred-and-fifty feet, somewhere in that area, kind of a compromise between one-hundred and five-hundred. And it gives people an opportunity, because a thousand I do, I do think is too restrictive. And as far as the ordinance, I'm, I'm in favor of it. I think it's important to align that with maybe other municipalities, keep things simple, so that we can, we can have a, a public understanding of all this, when, when and if it rolls out. And I do like the idea of the fifteen-hundred-feet separation between two licenses, so that they're not on top of each other and competing- on top of each other and competing and so forth. So, and this is not what we're working on tonight, but just to throw it out here, the signage issue, my guess is if this goes forward, the signage will be in alignment with our, our normal ordinances because that might create some interest from other, especially Ogden and 63rd, other municipalities. So we have to make sure our signage is, is correct.
Okay, thank you. Well, what I'm seeing here is I, I think there's general consensus that the zoning amendment as, as written is, is essentially good and will, will pass. The second issue is we're, we're going to want to come up with a number tonight. 1,250, 500, 100. I, I could propose, since most people are going with the 500, 100, if you add the two together, that's 600 and divided by two is 300. And there's your compromise.
There you go.
And that would be a number we could vote on and move this forward. The other, the other issue is this model ordinance. I'm comfortable with it for the fact that it's been vetted by our village attorney and it's, and, and he's, he has recommended it.
Well, and just to be clear, what, you're not being asked to vote on that model ordinance?
Oh.
I should have made that clear. I, that's only handed out because the state is, how do I say this? The state legislature approved all kinds of cannabis-related activities. And that model ordinance lists them all and gives definitions for them all. The, the staff report you got only has rules for where all those, for where the retail sales might go in Westmont. It doesn't address all the other things that the state legislation allows.
So the village board would deal with this?
Well, for, for the purposes of the discussion here tonight, the village attorney suggested that those other types of cannabis activities that are listed in that model ordinance, and that's the only reason that got handed out, that you say specifically for the record that those things could go in an M district with a special use permit just so that that's addressed and that we're on record saying, or you could do another rule, you could say they could be special uses in other districts. But the village attorney's thought was just say in the M district with a special use, the cultivation and some of the other things that are listed in there, that's where those now legal things per the state would be allowed in Westmont.
Would we be saying that these, that the retail dispensary would not be allowed in the M district?
No. So what is included in your staff report, and this is at the bottom of page three, is the retail sales piece of this puzzle would be a special use in the M district. So in the M district, all these other cannabis-related activities, cultivation, et cetera, would be a special use in the M district, as would retail sales. And then in addition to that, retail sales could be allowed elsewhere in the village with a special use and spacing requirements, is really the gist of what we're recommending.
No, I'm not clear on the spacing between other uses, say, growing facility and a retail facility in, in M district. What, they wouldn't have a 1,500-foot state?
That I don't know. You're asking if, if a retail dispensary is ultimately approved in an M district, would a cultivation business in the same M district be allowed? Well, one thought is we could, if you're comfortable, you could say that we would prohibit that. We would impose the same 1,500-foot distance between any cannabis-related business unless the state law prohibits that. And then ZEMIN Act could verify it. But if you want to prohibit a cannabis place, a cultivation place in a manufacturing district that also has a retail place, I would suggest we add that as a, a specific item.
Okay. How, how, we're still working on coming up with a number.
Three is good.
I think that's something that we can vote on. Any further?
I do have one item to add, and I am remiss that I didn't think of including this sooner. But we should just, for parking purposes, establish what kind of a business this is. You probably know the zoning ordinance lists, there's high-volume commercial uses with one stall for every 200 square feet of space, moderate volume commercial businesses with one stall for every 400, and low-volume commercial with one stall for every 600. I would suggest that we say that for this type of a business, we would call it a high-volume commercial business. And that, that would have the highest parking requirement for it. So if people are comfortable, then I would, I'll read back a list of what the motion should include, but I would suggest including that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion before we move forward to a, to a vote? Bruce, I'm going to need some help on-
Sure.
All right. We're going to have three aspects to, or four aspects to this vote. One is the zoning ordinance itself. And then we'll have three sub paragraphs, we're, a 300-foot spacing, a, all other uses could be located in M districts, and then spacing.
The spacing is already set forth in, in state regulation.
Okay, well-
From each other.
From each other. But we would want to specify any, any types of cannabis operations would have a state 1,500 feet.
Yep. Do you want me to read back what I think the consensus is?
Please.
All right. So the, if someone wants to make this motion, they would say to adopt rules that would allow retail cannabis sales in Westmont only as special uses in the B2, C1, and M districts with the following spacing requirements. 1,000 feet from schools, 300 feet from parks, and 100 feet from residential districts. Furthermore, any cannabis business, including cultivation and other cannabis businesses that are not retail, would have to be 1,500 feet of any other cannabis business unless the state rules, you know, trump that or don't let us do that. Additionally, all other cannabis activities, cultivation, et cetera, would only be allowed in Westmont in an M district and only if a special use permit is approved. And lastly, parking require, for parking requirements, a retail cannabis business would be defined by our zoning ordinance as a high-volume commercial business.
So move. Second.
Parking, high volume. Okay, so Commissioner Van Buren, motion. And Commissioner Thomas, seconds.
Any questions on the motion?
Okay. Questions, discussion on the motion. And then if everybody's clear on, on all the aspects of the motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Chairman Mark Carmichael?
Yes. So that's what's going forward to the village board and our recommendation. And they will have to deal with all these other political aspects of yea or nay or in or out. Our job is done on this issue.
Can I ask a question? Is it, is it already known when the village board plans on discussing this?
Well, there's a meeting tomorrow night. I doubt that this is on the agenda that soon. But I, I know that-
Yes?
Well, I guess it's between now and the end of the year, it has to be dealt with.
Well, as soon as possible because if they're gonna, if it's gonna be, the vote is yes, then there has to be time enough for the applicants to get in on line.
Okay, next, I am miscellaneous. First of all, I would like to regretfully announce that Commissioner Bartel will be retiring after her five years on, on this board. And thank you very much, Jen. We've dealt with some very difficult issues and some quite contentious. And you've been a great sport, positive attitude, really sound judgment, and a, and a lot of common sense, and we really appreciate it.
Well, thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like to take a moment and thank Mayor Gunter for, for appointing me to this board five years ago. I appreciate that very much. For Bruce and Alina, you've done such a great job and so supportive. Thank you. And of course, my fellow commissioners who have made this a wonderful experience. Hopefully I have contributed, but certainly I have learned. And this is, this is a, this is a great, a great village. Westmont's a great village. Your expertise, your insight, your commitment to the village, very much appreciated. So I will miss you all. But thank you. Thanks very much.
Enjoy those grandchildren.
Thank you. I will do that.
Further comments from commissioners, staff?
Can we roast her out?
No, don't roast him.
After the adjournment.
Two quick comments. Tomorrow night, the, the village board is, has on its agenda the appointment of a replacement commissioner. So once that's done, we, I'll send out an email and let people know some information about that person. And then hopefully they'll be joining us at the meeting in November. And then the last comment is, I talked to Jan right before the meeting started and, and she said that if we get done early enough, she would be agreeable to going out for a drink. And I said I would buy. So if people want to meet at a, a place nearby, I'd need about 10 minutes to shut down the building. But I'd be happy to send off Jan.
Okay.
Excellent. Maybe Amber.
Catty-corner, it's closed.
I would just say, announce that this is National Fire Week, all week. And Friday night, we have the traditional annual fire parade, silent parade, where all the fire departments and, and local communities get together and start in, in Hensdale Fire Station. They take Chicago and Avenue and Naperville Road all the way to Lyle. And it's traditional that people stand along the route, holding a flashlight or a candle and to honor the firemen and firefighters who have given their lives this year and in the past. So it's a, it's a, it's always a moving thing. The next day, the Saturday, is open house at the South Fire Station, the Johannick Fire Station from 11 to 3:00, and the public's certainly invited. This time, I would entertain a mo, a motion to adjourn. So move.
Second, Sharp.
Second, Sharp. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.